It's hide behind a beard.
There you go. Time to go.
It's called the meeting order. We're all present this evening. Item number two, at the Commissioner's request, discuss any item of concern on the regular session agenda of November the 7th, 2017.
Mayor, I did have a question about one item on the claims list. It was an item on there listing Global Spectrum incentive fee. 63016, I'm assuming this is something we paid for the last fiscal year, maybe the year before, I don't know, but it's $55,658.92. And my question pertains to, you know, how often we do this and how this payment is determined.
Okay, that's a good question. Annually, there is a formula in the contract for Global Spectrum that allows for them to receive an incentive. It's a two-part formula, and it's based on food and beverage, seven and a half percent of gross food and beverage sales and hotel stuff, hotel rate that's set. But I think, Aaron, you may have more information. Could you go ahead and answer that more fully?
Yeah, absolutely. There's a two-part, Global Spectrum manages the event center and the Visit Enid facility for us. They get a fixed management fee, but there's also part of that contract that allows for an incentive. And the part of the incentive for the event center is a seven and a half percent of gross food and beverage sales for the year. And then for the Visit Enid Center, it's set on benchmarks for hotel tax that we receive. There's only been one year that we've met that hotel tax. Since then, we've seen a decline in the hotel tax, and so they have not received that incentive the last four years now. The incentive that we're paying on this claims list is for the 63016 year. Once the numbers are audited for 17, we'll have that incentive payment and bring that forward to you for payment. But that was just on food and beverage sales for 2016, and the amount of their gross food and beverage for that year was 742,119 dollars.
While we're on this subject, just to clarify for me, and I don't know if I've ever re-understood how this works, the city receives all the money from the operation of the event center and convention hall, right?
Yes, there are accounts that are owned in the city's name, and they're managed.
And who writes the checks on those accounts? Do they write the checks, or do we?
They write the checks on those accounts, and they reconcile, and they provide all that financial information to us monthly. Then we go through all of it and reconcile and make sure that all of their information ties out cash flow-wise and what's coming out of those accounts to make sure that everything is accounted for properly within those accounts.
And the contract we have with, you know, I got a memo here a year or so ago, is their name now, they changed from Global Spectrum to Spectra? Is that correct, or is it still Global Spectrum?
They are, they have been, to definitively answer your question, I'd probably have to refer to Kevin Briskin. Kevin, right on schedule, come on in, please. If you'll come on up to the microphone, there's a question about, what do you guys call yourselves? Are you Global Spectrum, or are you Spectra Group? If you would answer a few of those questions, thank you. Good timing.
So, Global Spectrum is the official, I guess, legal name. Spectra is the new name we operate under.
Okay.
Has an alias.
Well, it combines a different, we combine a few different of our branches, I guess is the best way to describe it, so it all fell under Spectra, which is how it all came together.
Well, that's the clarification, because I just assumed that Global Spectrum had gone away and you'd rebranded yourselves.
It is not, no. That's really what it was, is a rebranding, so Global Spectrum is still the legal entity name, but the rebranding is Spectra.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on that contract?
Just a short time on the hot seat.
Anybody else? Item three, discuss the Call Lake Phase Two program update. Chris?
Thank you, sir.
Michael?
Okay. So, we're here to bring you to the next update. As everybody knows, we are approaching the end of our 30% design activity, so you'll understand what the next couple of months will bring. We'll give you the status update as of now. We will receive the, my staff will receive the design, the 30% design documentation in December, and we'll go through that. And then in the second meeting in January, I'm anticipating coming back in front of you to talk a little bit about the design, but more importantly, about what we estimate the construction cost to be, the total capital investment cost. From there, we will start working on our phasing plan and see what our options are as we work through that, come back to you, and whether we may do an interim, but at least we'll come back in three months and say, this is what we can phase it to.
Is this phased through December 31?
This is actually, we're, the design work is through December 31. The phasing is the additional three months, and there's an additional year of environmental and archaeological work that has to be accomplished, all in this phase. So, as we move forward with the next phase, there'll be that last piece of this phase going along in the background.
Well, I noticed in this book that you shared with us, there were a lot of the activities looked like they went on until June.
Understand that when we ran into a little bit of a schedule glitch, we moved that program management documentation out past the phasing, so we took that work up and moved it out there. So, yes, you are correct, but...
Well, the phasing plan itself goes to March or April, is that correct?
That is correct. So, you really won't see it up here on the slides, other than when we say we're done, but it will be reflected in the monthly reports, how we're progressing on those design consultant mandates and some of that design.
Do we have a date in mind when the final plans will be available?
I anticipate, the way the current schedule's laid out, I'm expecting to be completed with design and approaching, if not starting, construction in the summer of 19. We have some schedule risk.
We've got a $14 million loan in progress right now. When does that, when do we have to borrow money again?
Probably in the spring.
Before the next phase? I understand that, but I don't understand when that next, that time would be.
I'll bring that back with me as well in January.
I assumed it was December 31, but it obviously is longer than that.
No, there's really no sense in going out and getting another loan until we've seen the phasing plan and address some of the property access issues that we've run into and stuff like that. But that will all come back as a strategy and as a package, so we can talk about that. Any questions? Okay, Michael?
Thank you, Chris. Just a real quick update on the program status. We've had good progress on all of the major infrastructure components, and I'll go through each one of those here in just a little bit. Continuing the ongoing program controls and reporting aspects, we have really cranked up the risk management component of this program now that the 30% design is nearing completion. It allows us an opportunity to identify potential program risk, so those are, those activities are ongoing in the background. The original baseline schedule indicates that we should be 72% complete on this date. The actual percent complete is 62%, and that is, in regards to, a large majority of that is in regards to what Chris was just referring to, shifting some of those design consultant standards, manual development process that'll be necessary for the next phase, shifting that into the spring and early summer of next year to allow us to focus on delivering you the 30% design and updated cost opinion on time at the end of this year. And some of the reason for that shift was a result of limited access to some of the sites necessary where the infrastructure's going to be. Weather had an impact to play on some of that. And then the ultimate decisions and selection for the location for the intermediate booster pump station and the terminal storage, emergency storage location. However, even though it's 10% different than the baseline, this is a program schedule that we showed you when we started this phase, and very, very glad to report that this is where we're at right now in November, and all of your major milestones for infrastructure design and cost estimating are still on schedule and will be delivered at their original completion date. Real quickly on the infrastructure, finalizing design, we've selected alignments for the access roads. We have a high road access that will allow us unimpeded access during flood events, and then we have a low road access, which will be the normally traveled road. The 30% design and cost estimate is on schedule. Intermediate booster pump station site, now that that site has been determined, we have mobilized the resources to complete some major efforts in regard to geotechnical investigations, environmental biological surveys, the topographical survey, as well as completed the draft site layout. Very glad to report that this is also on schedule for delivery of 30% design and cost estimate. As you might expect, a lot of major activity on the pipeline, continued coordination with the multiple utility owners along the route. We have continued to have trouble with accessing some of the sites where the pipeline is proposed. We are moving forward. We feel like we have sufficient field data at this point to complete the cost estimating. However, we should all realize that because we don't have that actual field data, that we're transferring some cost risk into the next phase of design. We had a very productive alignment workshop in Tulsa a couple of weeks ago, where your staff and our staff went parcel by parcel over a 70-mile corridor alignment to identify certain constraints, dodge certain things, and actually kind of finalize where we want this pipeline, where the best scenario for the city is in regards to where this pipeline should be. That allowed us to develop an integrated database of what these alignment constraints are, so that we can continue to track those constraints as we move from preliminary design into final design. Lots of soil condition evaluation is ongoing, as well as reviewing leak detection technologies that we may or may not want to implement along the pipeline. 30% design and cost estimate is on schedule. You have seen this graphic before, and I just continue to include it to let you know that we are complete with the pedestrian surveys on the western section and the central section, but we are continuing to have those site access constraints up on the eastern component of the pipeline.
Have we actually talked to all the landowners, though?
We have actually communicated via letter and some emails, some phone calls for those that have bothered to reach out to us. I was expecting some pushback. I was kind of surprised at the, what I would call the magnitude of the people who really didn't want to talk to us until we're ready to buy easements. And they said, "Well, when you figure out what you're going to do for your easements and how much you're going to pay us, come back and talk to us." And so that's really, that's really one of the, one of the key factors that's making the pipeline portion kind of challenging, and it will, if we don't get a handle on it, it will roll into the environmental and the cultural, more importantly, the cultural resource survey, which is that activity that we do for the state historical preservation office to ensure we're not destroying something that's valuable.
And this slide just reflects some of that contact owner, property owner contact information. The greens reflect that property owners have said, "Yes, come on out and do what you need to do in this phase." Yellows were non-responsive or no contact, and reds were, "We don't want you on the property at this time." And again, like Chris said, I just want to reiterate, some of these yellows and reds are a result of us not being in that easement acquisition phase yet.
Michael, is there a reservoir north of Garber there at that IBPS site?
No, that is a, that's the intermediate booster pump station site.
There's not a reservoir there?
There's not, Mayor. The first reservoir along the pipeline is the emergency storage reservoir in this vicinity right here.
Okay, okay.
Update on those terminal storage reservoirs, finalizing design on those as we speak, the preliminary design. We have a drainage report that we must submit to the commission in accordance with all other type of development that goes on within the city limits. Very glad that we have a TSR emergency storage site identified, and since that has been done, we've been able to kind of accelerate our schedule a little bit and play catch-up to complete some of the major tasks listed here, the geotechnical investigations, the biological survey for the, to meet the NEPA requirements, the topo survey, and conducted a draft site layout. I'm glad to report that this will also be on schedule with its 30% design and cost estimate update. Water treatment plant, continuing to progress here. In fact, the water treatment plant is actually ahead of schedule, and that's saying a lot because this component of the program is probably the most technically challenging, the most complex, the most moving parts, but we are, we are going to be delivering the water plant final design ahead of schedule. And with that, I'm going to transition to a brief video to kind of give you guys a feel for, at the 30% stage, what the water treatment plant site will look like on Chestnut. So, this is, this is Chestnut here, this is Wheatbridge. This is the three terminal storage reservoirs for equalization. These are the smaller of the terminal storage reservoirs. Water from the lake will be stored there and then pumped with a raw water pump station located there at the water treatment plant site. This pump station will deliver untreated raw water to the first treatment step in the drinking water treatment plant. That first treatment step will be pre-ozoneation, and that's primarily to target some taste and odor compounds that may be present in the surface water, as well as help precipitate iron and manganese, should it be present in the water as well. Once it leaves that pre-ozoneation step, it goes into a flocculation and sedimentation basin, where we remove a lot of the residuals or the heavy solids turbidity that's in the water. Once we've clarified that water by removing the colloidal matter, we then go back into an ozone treatment step. This is post-ozoneation, or intermediate ozonation, sometimes you will hear it referred to as. And again, that's to optimize the water for precipitation of iron and manganese, as well as reduce taste and odor compounds. It also allows us to condition the water to facilitate our filtration step, which is next, to operate in a biological format, again, to continue to remove organic matter, taste and odor compounds. And this is a interior view of the filtration complex. Within these filter cells, there'll be activated, or there'll be granular media associated with removing fine colloidal matter. This is the basement of that building, a large expansive room to facilitate maintenance and operations. You can actually drive a work truck into that facility. Some of the feed pumps here, once the water leaves the filter complex, it goes into a granular activated carbon step. This is a polishing step for the final organics removal component of the water treatment Once we leave the GAC, or the granular activated carbon contactors, the solids that are removed from that clarification step and from the filtration step will be deposited in these circular tanks here, where we concentrate those solids before we send them to the lagoons. We also have onsite a backwash storage tank. This is finished water, treated water, that we keep onsite there to facilitate the cleaning of the filters. After they run so much, they have to be cleaned periodically, and we do that with the water we just treated that we kept onsite. That's a view of the lagoons. Now, that's the solids train, back on the liquids train. We finished off that granular activated carbon step. Now we disinfect the water with chlorine. The water has to stay in storage for such a, so many, so many hours before it's distributed to the community. It's a contact time requirement. These are the pumps that distribute that water to the community, to both the east and west pressure plane. Just a little bit broader view, looking west, southwest.
Those big white areas, are those covered tanks?
Those are in-ground storage. See the decorative fencing on the way up? This is the administrative and operations building, maintenance building off to its right, and some covered storage off to its right. Thank you, Dana. So that was a quick nickel tour. Be glad to walk you guys through the facility once it gets built and spend as much time as you want with it.
Michael, when do you blend that water with what's coming from the wells?
In that last storage component, there's a blended storage mixing area where we facilitate the finished water from the surface water treatment plant at a certain ratio of groundwater before we pump that water to the east and west pressure plane.
Isn't it true that you have to blend more of the water coming from Call Lake than you do coming from our wells?
That is the objective.
Clean the water, whatever you want to call it.
That is the objective, is to reduce your reliance on groundwater by increasing the percentage of water that gets sent to town from Call. It's about, we're targeting about a two-thirds ratio, two-thirds of the water from Call. Just, I know you guys have a busy agenda, so I'm going to buzz through these real quick. The video was pretty quick.
Don't hurry, this is a big project.
This is a...
When do you start working on the buildings in that area?
Well, we are, we are nearing completion with the 30% design of those buildings.
Okay.
And we've done architectural features, and that's what you're seeing here. These are renderings from our drawings that we've completed on the water treatment plant. The next step in the next phase, when we start hiring design consultants, they will take this 30% design to 100% or bid-ready status. So that, that design process will finish in the next phase.
From the time that a gallon of Call water arrives there, how long does it be before it would be ready to go out to the customer?
What time of year?
July?
It does. In July, maybe four or five days. Depending upon how many TSRs, the EQ TSRs, these, these three tanks right here, but depending upon how many of them are in service, that dictates the storage time.
Well, I was thinking more, though, about the processing time, the time to get through the plant and all those steps of that.
A little over a day.
Right. There's a lot of, that just looks like a lot of open water surface. What's going to prevent birds from being attracted to that? Because it's like right off the edge, not very far from the runway at Vance.
Very good question, and we've had a lot of coordination with Woodring and Vance Air Force Base during the previous phase to site this location and to keep the footprint of the open water at FAA allowable surface areas. Now, the other storage tank, the other storage vessel, the emergency storage, with 60 acres of stored water, it was not feasible to put it any closer to town than we already put it.
Okay. And we're working on some design features to make these particular water bodies not attractive.
Good.
And we've actually had long discussions with Flight Safety out at the base on this, so they're very comfortable with what we're doing here.
Thank you. Talk to me a little bit about the, after we get the number in January, beginning of January, when you were talking about phasing, how quickly that's going to come together, what that process is going to be?
Okay. Once we provide you with what our updated cost estimate is, then we will go through in that three-month period, and I don't really anticipate it'll take all of that, but going through and finding, based on how much flow we can get through the pipe, what we need to get here in town, what of those lagoons do we not need, what basins do we not need? We don't need all the filtration to start with. We don't plan on buying all the pumps to start with. And so those are the things that we're going to go through. We did this earlier in Phase One, just basically back of the envelope, and came up with a pretty big round number. What we'll do is we'll go through it piece by piece and find out what it is that we don't have to have to meet what we would consider the minimum mission, the minimum requirement.
It seems a large part of this cost that we, we really aren't going to know until we start buying it is the right-of-way acquisition. How do you come up with a cost estimate for 70 miles of pipeline right-of-way?
Well, actually, Michael's got a land acquisition firm, is that what you call it? Yeah. In the process of doing that now, doing, doing the desktop review and doing cost estimating, and understand, the right-of-way acquisition for this program has got the most schedule risk, but based to that, compared to that water treatment plant, very small cost risk. Where it hurts us the most is in the schedule.
Okay.
And if the schedule gets out of control, obviously, you end up spending more money because it takes you longer to get everything done.
Okay.
Just tell me again, does all the water that come from Call go to the Chestnut facility?
Once we get the emergency storage facility full, yes.
And the emergency storage system is where? North Enid?
Northeast.
We're just going to flood North Enid?
Yeah.
I was thinking it was more of a...
Put a flag, take over.
No, we looked a little bit further over there, but, but when you deal with the fact that you've got maintenance and, and access, and you got to, you know, we're going to want somebody to be keeping an eye on it as well, because we don't want cars in it, that kind of thing. Okay?
We're showing you interior floor plans of the administration building. This is the architectural rendering of what the administration building would look like. Little closer view there of the entrance, west side, trying to incorporate a water feature. Interior, this is the entrance to the water treatment plant. If you look to the left, that's a secure area. It's the kind of first barrier of security from the public. We'll be, we'll have glass there that you can see, see into the laboratory there on the left, and then the windows a little bit further into the picture there are the control room. Went to the right, you would see the training area that is planned to be housed there at the water treatment plant. Okay, that's the water plant. Now on to the infrastructure. Once we treat the water, we blend the water, we've got to distribute that water to the community. We have finalized the transmission main alignment. We have completed the modeling, Mayor, that you were kind of referring to other, earlier to make sure the blended ratios with the finished water ratios are accurate. Continuing with the preliminary design report and the 30% design and cost estimate are on schedule for this piece of infrastructure as well. Real quick environmental update, as Chris mentioned, this is a two-year effort. This will continue beyond the cost estimating phase. We're in pretty good shape with regards to biological studies. I will point out that that limited access to the pipeline has kept us from doing 100% of the biological studies that, that we need. And more importantly, the, the cultural resource studies, not only on the pipeline, but also on the emergency storage and the, and the intermediate booster pump station are certainly impacting that schedule as well. Geotechnical schedule, very glad to report that all the major infrastructures are 100% complete, with the exception, again, of the pipeline, and that goes back to those site access issues and the distribution. Blended storage line that feeds the pressure planes is about 50% complete, and they're actually out there, took a look at it on my way in this afternoon, they're actually out there working on that this week. Just a couple of photos of some of the marine boring that occurred at Call Lake. This is our subcontractor, actually at the reservoir. This is a, them pulling up a core sample, a little closer, and Morales making sure that we get a good bird's eye view of what they pulled up out of, out of the soil. Okay, so that ends the infrastructure updates. I've got just a few more minutes. I want to talk a little bit about data management as we start to embark upon this next phase of, of program management services. We are evaluating what's called a program management information system. This is a pretty routine, routinely used type of software for programs of this magnitude. What I have reflected on this, on this graphic, is this is some of the major activities that the program manager is leading right now, that we are leading right now, on this single project, because this is really considered one project right now. We always talk about five different infrastructure pieces, but really, it's one project right now, because you have one primary contract holder, and we're doing all the design, and, and so this is, this bubble here is kind of what we're managing. We're just doing that with typical correspondence management, data management type activities that you would probably do in your businesses, because it's just one project. But let's talk about how this thing expands when we move into the next phase, and I'll use the pipeline as the first example. Let's, we have 70 miles of pipeline. The current acquisition strategy is not to let that construction contract to one construction contractor. So let's assume at this point that we're going to have six different segments of construction projects along that 70-mile corridor, basically seven or six different construction contracts. Well, each one of those is going to have a design contract as well for the final designer. What will, what will one of those design contracts look like? So I've taken just one of the six design contracts that I had in the previous slide and kind of shown you just a brief overview of some of the data management, correspondence management, and design management activities that that design... management, and design management activities that that design contractor is responsible for, therefore that the program manager is responsible for, and the city's program manager is responsible for. After design, we'll move into construction. Similar type of correspondence and data management will be necessary on the construction contractor. In parallel with construction, we'll have observation and inspection services of that construction contract. And when you look at the data management and correspondence that they're responsible for, you can see that this one leg, this one contract of six pipeline contracts starts to get pretty hairy, and when you look at all six of them, that's a tremendous amount of correspondence, data management, design management that is responsible for just the pipeline. It becomes quite overwhelming. But recall, we don't just have a pipeline that we're going to construct with this program. We're going to construct a couple of reservoirs, water treatment plant, distribution system improvements, intake, a booster pump station. You blow all of those up into the anticipated contracts that we're going to have, you can see that it really, really gets out of hand with the amount of interaction between design consultants, construction contractors, review agencies, regulatory agencies, can really, really kind of eat us up. So what we are preparing you for is introduction to a program management information system software, which allows us to keep all of this, all of this data in one location, easily accessible by city staff and the program manager. We're recommending that for Phases Three and Four. This type of software system offsets significant labor costs. We had to have somebody managing that correspondence and design management for each one of those projects at each one of those phases. That labor cost can, can quickly, quickly add up on you. It facilitates complex coordination between the city program management staff, our program management staff, the design consultants, and the construction contractors. Also, it allows us really to do a forensic analysis of any project component at any time during that program's lifecycle with robust scheduling and live cash flow scenarios to see where we're at on the spending curve for any individual contract that you have with a design consultant or a construction contractor. And it also, very importantly, helps us standardize our communication and correspondence protocols. The PMIS, or the Program Management Information System, will be critical for Phase Three. We anticipate it's about a three-to-five month implementation time once the software is purchased. But one of the first things that we need to do in Phase Three, and Chris has kind of talked about this a couple of times already tonight, is establish and initiate that land acquisition process and procedures. We need to aggressively initiate that land acquisition process. That helps us address those schedule risks that he was talking about with the pipeline earlier. So that's kind of the first step, once we purchase this PMIS software, is to implement those land acquisition process and procedures. We are working on a funding requirement for the initial actions associated with the PMIS, and we'll be doing that, hope to roll that out, maybe, maybe in January, that might be a little bit aggressive, but in parallel at least with the phasing plan that's coming in the spring.
So you can work on two at the same time, and one doesn't have to be finished before you start?
That is correct. And, and at the same time, they'll be cleaning up those design consultant manuals that worked that we picked up in the middle of, in the middle of the phase and moved to the end of the phase. It can appear to be overwhelming, but it's something that, that acquisition boards do all the time, and that's really what we're talking about, is doing an acquisition program. And so, and, and the ability to get all the communication, all the documentation in electronically and consistent, and all looking the same, and all the pieces integrating are the critical components of making this work together. Any questions?
What does RFI stand for?
RFI? Request for Information.
Oh.
Okay. It's kind of how we make formal requests of Michael and Michael of us for information. It's how we'll get formal requests for information that has to be answered within a scheduled amount of time and meet the requirements of the request. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Item four, Discuss Aviation and Aerospace Economic Impact Study. On out?
Good evening. If I may, I'd like to introduce my new airport operations manager, Keston Cook. He's over in the back there. He is taking Caleb Arthur's position, and he's a recent graduate of OSU Airport Management. Just wanted to introduce him so that when you see him, you'll know he's part of the airport staff. Welcome. I'm sure he's a great addition to our staff. Tonight, the Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission recently contracted a study to determine the current economic impact of aviation to, to the state. And tonight we have Grayson Ayers with the Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission who's going to give us a quick, quick briefing on the results of that study.
Thank you, Dan. And thank you for allowing me the time to come and talk to you all. I understand if I go over time, you're going to play music, get me off the stage like they do at the Oscars, so I, I don't want to be one of those guys. With that being said, I think some of you have seen, probably most of you have seen the, the news in, in the newspaper, maybe you came to our announcement at the Oklahoma History Center about the Economic Impact Study of Aviation Aerospace across the state. What we did with this study, when we decided we wanted to do an economic impact study, why would we want to do this? You know, is this just to pat ourselves on the back and say, hey, good job Aviation Aerospace is doing great things? Or, or is there a real meaning to this? And the answer is, there is real meaning to this. And really, this study is for you all. Yes, we, we love to see this study. We are a state agency that's in charge of promoting aeronautics across the state, but we did this for towns and communities across Oklahoma to, to, to let, allow you all to understand the importance of your local airport. Now, I, I certainly imagine here in Enid, given how supportive you've been at Woodring Airport, Vance Air Force Base, you all get the importance of Aviation Aerospace, but you'd be surprised that you're all's mentality, your great mentality of, of supporting Aviation Aerospace is not shared with all communities across the state. So that, that's really the reason we did this study, was to make sure that everybody understands that, hey, Aviation Aerospace is important. As you'll see in this presentation, Aviation Aerospace is the number-two industry in Oklahoma. Most people don't realize that. Most people think, oh, it's oil, we got oil and gas, we got medical, we've got agriculture, we've got all kinds of other industries. Aviation Aerospace is the number-two industry, and we've actually kind of combined the different sectors of Aviation Aerospace to come up with a new idea, and that's really these three sectors right here. First, 109 public airports in the system, it's 105 general aviation airports like you have right here at Enid-Woodring Regional Airport, plus the four commercial airports, Stillwater, Lawton, Oklahoma City, Will Rogers, and Tulsa International. On top of that, we obviously have military aviation. Military aviation is the biggest sector spearheaded by our three air force bases. Vance Air Force Base, obviously, right here down the road, Tinker Air Force Base being a big chunk of that, plus Altus Air Force Base. Not to forget that we have some Air National Guard units located at Will Rogers, Tulsa International, but also the Oklahoma Army National Guard aviation components, the Roto-Craft units that fly across Oklahoma, you'll see those. And then last but not least, we have the off-airport Aviation Aerospace Companies in Oklahoma. Since the beginning of World War II, or since the end of World War II, really Oklahoma has had a, a fostering network of Aviation Aerospace Companies. We like to say we keep them in the air. We do MRO work. That, that's really what our state is known for. We train pilots very well with Altus and Vance and, and a lot of the aviation programs we have across the state at OU, OSU, Southeastern, Spartan in Tulsa, so on and so forth, but we are really about keeping aircraft in the air. You have the largest single military MRO facility, maintenance, repair, and overhaul facility at Tinker Air Force Base, largest commercial MRO facility in American Airlines up there in Tulsa. You all have an MRO facility right here at your airport. I'm sure everybody knows about ASIC, world-renowned. They, they take caravans that you didn't even know was an airplane and turn them back into a flying aircraft. That's certainly a great thing to have right here in your backyard, but they are one of the MRO, one of the many MRO facilities that we have across the state. So what, what am I here to talk to you about today? I, I want to talk to you a little bit about the economic impacts of the two entities that you have here in your community, but also want you to understand how it came with these numbers, because just spouting out these numbers and saying, here's what the economic impacts, that, that doesn't do anybody any good, because at the end of the day, we need to understand and determine how we came up with these numbers, so that if you ever question, you're having coffee one morning and, hey, this, this gentleman came and spoke to our city council meeting and said the economic impact of the Woodring Airport was X, Y, and Z, why in the world, how, how did he get to those numbers? Those are some grand numbers. How in the world did that happen? There's really three things that we took, we take a look at with economic impacts: employment, payroll, and spending. And obviously, the total economic activity is the payroll plus the spending, and you'll see this in the packets that I passed out to you. And for those that weren't able to receive hard copy package, you can go to our website, OAC.OK.gov, and find all the information that I passed out here, and I've also got some handouts for the individual reports, if you'd like to grab those before I leave. This is just a, a quick, probably 10-second video of all the different flights in the different locations that aircraft go out of airports from Oklahoma. I think you've heard the phrase, give me a mile of highway, I can get you a mile. Give me a mile of runway, I can get you the world. And that's really, really is true. At the end of the day, the different locations that airports in Oklahoma take people across the country and across the world is really amazing. What are the five buckets, five buckets of economic impact, really? And these apply not only to Woodring Airport, but they apply to Vance Air Force Base. Well, those, those two visitors spending, sir, I don't think you had any general aviation visitors to the Air Force Base anytime recently. If so, they probably weren't spending anything except for maybe a little time visiting with you as to why they landed on your runway. But at the end of the day, these five buckets are what determine the economic impacts of our commercial airports, our GA airports, as well as our military bases. So what's the total for 109 commercial and general aviation airports? You can see of these five buckets, you break these numbers out, you see the largest sectors, obviously tenants, airport tenants, coming in at 7.6 billion. Total economic impact of the 109 airports is about 10.6 billion, just over 74,000 direct and indirect jobs. That's, that's a pretty substantial sum, only to be outdone by the off-airport Aerospace Companies, and that's being outdone by the military aviation on top of that. Oklahoma airports support business needs. I think we all understand the importance of having great business aviation, but this is a, a study or survey that we did as part of this economic impact study. You can see that, obviously, at the top, that any business is looking for is labor. Can't have a business without your labor or workforce. Got to have convenient access to highway to move your services and your goods out to the customer. Reasonable tax rates and tax incentives. Obviously, we know that, we're a very tax-friendly state here in Oklahoma. We, we, we know the importance of trying to attract business with those convenient tax rates. But right below that, you have proximity to an airport with scheduled commercial airline service and proximity to an airport that has general aviation capabilities. So those are very high in the priority list when you're trying to attract business to your community. You've heard our boss, my director, say many times, business doesn't come calling on a Greyhound bus anymore, business comes calling on a business jet or some kind of aircraft. When businesses want to come to your community, they're, they're seeing that front doorstep, your terminal building, your airport is the front doorstep to your community when you're trying to recruit businesses to come to your town. And that's why it's important to make sure you have a good airport, as you all do, and as you've invested very wisely over your airport over the last five to 10 years, probably going back even further than that, but that's, that's my history as far as how far back I go. So what are the findings? This is obviously very indicative of, of what the, the study shows overall. The three sectors total up about $43.7 billion. At the end of the day, that, that's really what we're trying to sell here with this economic impact study. Aviation Aerospace is important, but here's why it's important. It's important because of these numbers right here. This is the Woodring Economic Activity Numbers. I know those are some pretty small numbers, but the big numbers are right there, those four columns. Total jobs supported by the airport, 293 jobs. Payroll, 11.3 million. Annual spending, just shy of 18 million. Total economic activity, 29.2 million dollars a year. That's important. You may think, ah, 29 million, in fact, that's going to be pretty small compared to what Vance Air Force Base contributes, but every little bit helps when it comes to economic activity of small towns and communities across Oklahoma. And the one thing I want you to think about is, I know these questions are running through your head right now, I can't believe the airport support system has benefited. How, how does it really have 2.5 million or whatever the number might be in annual economic activity? There are 20 people working at the airport, and that's all true. These aren't just direct jobs at the airport. This is money coming in to the airport, coming into the military base, and getting recycled in the local economy. And you'll see that here in a second with this diagram, but before we get there, here's the total economic impact for Vance Air Force Base. Now, as you can see, this is three lines, direct, indirect, and induced. The direct numbers, tho- those are pretty, pretty known. Our Department of Commerce reached out to the base and got those numbers. Here's how much payroll we have, how much spending we do. Here's how many direct employees we have, both contractors, civilian, and military personnel. And they're able to put this through a modeling system, an economic modeling system called IMPLANT. At the end of the day, that model, so long as it's used conservatively, will tell you how much those dollars get recycled in the local community and support other jobs, whether that's retail, restaurants, housing, construction, your vet bill, physicians, so on and so forth. All those jobs that are directly done at the base go to support almost another 3,000 jobs off the base. And that's really where it becomes evident that the airport, the military base, all support not just the direct jobs that are there, not just the people that are actually employed at the airport or at the base, but are really supported by the local community, because imagine what would happen if that base goes away? Not only is it just 3,000, 3,300 people off the base, but you're also seeing these indirect and induced jobs. All those would go away, but a good chunk of those because they are directly tied to. It may not just be a single person's job, but it may be a tenth of that job. So a tenth of that waiter job, or a tenth of that vet job. And you had to take enough of those tents out of there, you're going to run into some issues. That's what I want to talk to you, so you have the direct, so we had the direct numbers, the direct economic impacts for the military base, for Enid-Woodring Regional Airport. You throw those through the IMPLANT model, you get your indirect and your induced impacts, what other jobs does the base or does the airport support in the local community? And you get your total impacts. Indirect impacts mostly associated with industrial distribution, professional services, so on and so forth. Induced impacts are more the retail service centers in your restaurant-type, your, your support, your plumbing-type jobs, so on and so forth. This is the slide where it talks about, okay, so let's say we had $500 of direct employee payroll for an airport for somebody at the base. That person goes and spends $50 at the vet, $150 in groceries at the grocery store, $200 for a physician, that's $400 of indirect or induced payroll that others are receiving in the community, across the community, that are very important. And when you total these numbers up, not just this one person, but all 3,300 people at the base, or all the direct employees working at the regional airport, and you get some real great economic impact numbers for the local community. At the end of the day, that's what we're trying to show, is that, hey, this is important. We need to support this from a policy perspective, we need to support it from a financial perspective, we just need to support it, period. That being said, I know I'm running short on time, so we have, these are all the publications. You'll see this is some of the stuff I've handed out to you today. It's also on our website. We have the executive summary, we have the technical report if you really want to get deep in the weeds. We have a two-page fact sheet if you want to stay very high level, and of course, we have a legislative report for all legislative districts that have airports across the state. So with that being said, I'll stand for questions. If anybody wants to visit with me, they can call me up or shoot me an email, be happy to answer your questions or, or talk to you about the economic impact study in more detail.
Anybody? Grayson, thank you.
Thank you so much. Did I get, did I get in on time? I didn't hear the music.
Pretty good.
Oh, good. All right. Good, good.
Item five, Discuss Soccer Fields in Reston Garland. Joe?
Yes, Jimper Nelson is, is here to discuss this with us, with Enid Sports Complex, and here she is.
What a neat tree. How are y'all? I know y'all are running short on time. I provided you some handouts. We can kind of run through the presentation. I have Mike Frankie here with me, he's on the board of Enid Sports in case I need some backup. We're proposing a location at the intersection of Rup and Garland. This is just south of Walmart on the west side of town. John Nguyen is attending today to kind of get deeper into that detail at a, later on in the presentation. The athletic facility that we're looking for includes 12 soccer fields with irrigation and some field lighting. It will also include your concessions and restrooms, shade structures, and playgrounds. These next few slides are going to show you kind of the scope of work that we're looking at doing, some high-quality fields. This is what we're referring to as the championship stadium that will host kind of like the finals and the semifinal games of tournaments. Here's just some fields with some lightings, a central pavilion where your restrooms would be located. It's important to know that these aren't actual designs. These are professional renderings, just to give you an idea of the concept of what we're going for, some state-of-the-art facility. It's also important to know that a part of this project is to include a park-like feel. Soccer is a very family-oriented sport. While Jimmy, his 10-year-old, is playing, his little sister, who's six, wants to go and play on the park. So we try our, we're trying to create an event space that can also be used kind of for your outdoor movies or outdoor concerts, maybe an art festival. This will be a very good flex space. And there's an idea of a shade structure. Soccer requires a lot of land, and it can get really hot. And so shade structures are very important when you're talking about soccer. I know y'all know about the current complex, so I won't dwell on this too much. While it is usable about 80% of the year, it's important to realize that that doesn't benefit us. Our current complex was never meant to be a soccer field. It was meant to be a retention pond. So when it rains, it rains, and it does its job very well, and it holds that water for days at a time. This slide shows you, this is five days after rain, and the games still can't be played. All of those, that's debris, all of that debris that just gets washed up and sits there. So it has to be cleaned off of the fields in order to play. Just to give you an idea, this fall season, this fall, it's still going on right now. The game started in September. We've already had two cancellations, two weekends canceled, causing to reschedule 378 games. It's insane. We have 1,000 kids in Enid, in Enid, that play soccer. We also draw teams from Alva, Fairview, and Kingfisher, and yet we can't host a tournament because our facilities are embarrassing. So it's kind of a loss for the city of Enid from a revenue perspective. This is kind of additional issues that we have, aside from being in a retention pond. You know, we, wayfinding, getting to the complex is difficult. If you don't play soccer in Enid, you have no idea where the soccer complex is. There's no sign-in, there's no designated entry. In fact, it looks like most of you are probably going to work when you're really on your way to the soccer complex because it goes to the public works. The bathrooms are scary and dingy, prison-like bathrooms. And your fields, you know, the city does the best that they can to maintain them, but you can't maintain, you can't maintain fields in a water retention area. When they plant seed, the time to plant seed is in the spring or the fall, and it rains. So all your seed goes away. And then in a drought season, there's no irrigation out there, so then the fields become, well, the grass goes away, they become dirt piles. So I'll touch base on how a tournament works now, just so you know kind of what the city's missing in a revenue-gaining standpoint. These are teams, we have, Enid is fortunate with a low-quality facility. We have a lot of teams that play a high-quality game, and they travel as far as Broken Arrow, Clinton, Skiatook. Skiatook has 8,000 people that live there, and they have a better soccer complex than we do with 8,000 people. That bottom picture right there, the smaller one, those boys were eight years old and won the championship in the rain. They played in the rain. See, we don't even, we can't even play in the rain because we'll be swimming. These are some of our girls' teams that have gone as far as Lawton, three hours away to play in a tournament. It's kind of silly because the kids in Lawton, they have a club smaller than we do, and they would come to Enid to come play if we had a facility for them. This is an idea of what a tournament consists of. In fact, that team right there, this picture was taken at 8:00 AM Saturday morning. They were in Kansas City this weekend. They won that tournament in Kansas City. That was a high-profile tournament. There were over 500 teams that turned out for that tournament. But just so you know, there is an entry fee to enter into a tournament. It usually requires a hotel stay, and even if it doesn't require one, people stay anyway because you might be scheduled at 8:00 AM. So they come and stay. And then there's a lot of downtime between games where they can go eat and shop and spend money. This kind of gives you an idea. This tournament was two weeks ago. You can see in the red font, it says it was sold out. That's good in way of tracking tournaments. As the director of Enid Sports, I want to see that. I want to know how many people are coming to Enid and prepare our hotels, prepare our market for those events. And you can see in the yellow circle, they've got this tournament scheduled out for years in advance. I mean, people that just competed in that tournament two weeks ago are already scheduling and paying to compete next year. Based on this same tournament, this is what numbers look like if it were in Enid. So an average team has 16 players. 326 teams turned out to that tournament two weeks ago. Based on kind of the numbers that Marcy gave me from Visit Enid, that comes up with 5,200 travel parties. They spent, just staying one night, between lodging, meals, shopping, almost $2 million. That's a city revenue of $87,000 just in one night. And most people stay two nights because they want to wake up fresh in the morning. That's an idea of what we're missing out on. Now, that is a big tournament. We wouldn't be able to do that. This is hosted in Tulsa. So just to give you an idea of what Enid Sports is shooting for, we're hoping to host six annual tournaments a year at minimum. And just so you know, all the revenue that would come in wouldn't just be tournament-based. There's other events that we can do as well. I'm hoping to get 150 teams. I think that's very doable, and I think it's very conservative. In fact, we may end up having to feed over into the old complex for overflow in the beginning of the tournament. That would bring in a revenue of a quarter of a million dollars in a year just on tournaments alone. This is one of the tournaments I'm already in discussion with on hosting here. This would probably be the first tournament on the schedule. This is a club-based tournament, which may mean nothing to you if you're not into soccer, but South Lakes in Oklahoma City hosts this tournament every year. Their average turnout is 180 teams. They are very interested in branching out their club. They already have some teams here in Enid. In fact, my son plays for one. But anyway, they're looking into branching out their tournaments, and they would love to bring a Cosmo Cup tournament here to Enid. So based on the same calculations, calculating travel parties and money spent in Enid, the city would gain almost $50,000 in revenue just on this one tournament. And again, I would like to, I'm striving to host six tournaments a year. Some of the additional events that I was just thinking, speaking about were junior college national championship games. This is very similar to what David Allen does with their Juco World Series downtown. It's just soccer-based. This means prolonged stays, you know, hosting upwards of 200, 300 teams even in junior college, men's and women's, and being able to run multiple games at a time. And with lit fields, we could even run them into the night, which would be very helpful. But that would, that would be ideal. They really like us here in Enid, so it'd be nice if we could capture another sector of sports. Also, Oklahoma City Energy is a professional team based out of Oklahoma City. They just went to the semifinals for the Western Region, and they've reached out to us about hosting one of their preseason games here. Usually, they go to different high schools or colleges and play those teams. And so, you know, they could play Northwestern, or they could play Enid High. We haven't gotten to the details, but they've already reached out and said, "If you build this facility, we'll come," which is fantastic. Also, recruiting camps for college scouts, this would give an opportunity for kids to gain scholarship opportunities, even local, I mean, local kids would, this would be amazing for the local kids. And other tournaments. This is kind of what the financials look like. Enid Sports has been given $3 million by generous donors to help build this facility, but it will take more than that. So I'm here today in hopes that you could add in infrastructure additions. Gerald and I have sat down several times together, including John Nguyen, to come up with different ways. I think it's appropriate, if I'm asking for city funding, to be used on infrastructure. You may have other ideas based on that. And again, this number is a guess. We don't know until we know. And we'll know after the land is acquired. John, I don't know if you have anything to add on that now, but we're working on it, is what I know. And we've designated an architect and an engineer for the project. We've selected Elliott and Associates out of Oklahoma City. You can see some of their familiar work, Pops and Arcadia, the Boathouse District in downtown Oklahoma City, and Bicentennial Park, also in downtown Oklahoma City. Rand Elliott is a well-known architect all over the nation, and he was excited about this because he has a nephew that plays soccer in London. And so, and he's also working with Energy on building their new stadium in downtown Oklahoma City. The great thing about Mr. Elliott is that he builds to budget. So whether it's a $10,000 building or a $10 million building, he'll build you something cool. And then the engineers selected for the project are out of Oklahoma City as well, Olson and Associates. They've done everything. Jimmy, he left, but he could probably tell you some of the projects they've done. Some of their recent soccer projects include South Lakes Soccer Park in Oklahoma City and Woodson Park in Midwest City. And then this, this one right here is Overland Park. That's a $36 million facility in Kansas, and that's where our girls went last week, and they won that tournament. It's pretty amazing. So our next steps are just trying to figure out the involvement that the city can provide, if any, hopefully some. But I think, I think it's a no-brainer. I think everyone knows that sports generates revenue. And right now, we have a lot of baseball fields. We have some football fields. You know, our soccer community is the largest group of people that we have in Enid that play soccer, and their facilities are not so hot. So I think, I think it would be a really good investment for you, and I think knowing that it's phased helps. And I'm here to help continue fundraise and get this going. So if y'all have any questions, I tried to make that as fast as I could.
I have one.
Okay, yes, sir.
As far as the surface, what are you, what's your plan? Are you going to use astroturf or natural grass?
Well, I'm glad you brought that up. Next week, Cal Ripken Jr. Foundation is doing a bid opening down in the city on a baseball field, and it's going to give us a good cost comparison on natural turf versus artificial turf. I would hope that we could at least get one field in artificial turf, just in case it is raining and the fields do get kind of soggy. But with the proper irrigation and the proper construction of the field, I think it's possible to have a high-grade natural turf field and not have it be as damaged as it is in a water retention pond. Any other questions?
How many fields did you have are involved in it?
I'm going for 12. I'm going for 12. I'll settle for 10 if I'm, if I'm forced to, but I don't like to settle, so.
How many total acres are in the complex?
Let's see here.
127, I believe.
It is. This is 127 acres. Now, it only takes about 80 acres to build a 12-field complex. What this does provide is room for growth and also football fields. Our football fields are not a high-quality field either, being on top of a landfill. So I think, I honestly am going to continue to try fundraising, and if I can get to a point where we can incorporate football fields, I'd like to add that to the project. I haven't talked to my board about that yet.
Did I say a baseball field on there?
I don't know. We.
If it back run.
You know, we, we could look at it. I think we have plenty of baseball fields in the city, and, you know, baseball, I think, only has about 600 kids involved. Where soccer, we're at 1,000, and it continues to grow. It is a growing sport. I think with a high-quality facility like this and with the military expanding, they're looking for places to go. And we are so fortunate. Our pilots have graduated from the academy on soccer scholarships. You know, I mean, a lot of Enid Soccer Club's coaches are pilots that just want to stay involved with soccer but can't play because we don't have an adult league, which is fantastic. And I would hope to create some sort of, you know, I can, I actually, I have it in my mind, pilots versus cops or firemen versus, you know, pilots, type of fundraising events or, you know, well-being events. Brian, you going to get out there for me?
How many parking places do you anticipate having to provide for this?
Well, the beauty about soccer is that games rotate. So while we wouldn't need to accommodate enough parking for 12 fields all at once, we need to have plenty for in and out. I would say it's appropriate to accommodate about 700 parking spaces, especially if you, if, if we think about getting busloads of kids in here from, you know, Northwestern or, or, you know, wherever, other junior colleges, we need to be able to accommodate them.
Parking, bus parking.
Most definitely.
Do you plan to have seating or will?
I would love to have seating. If you bear with me, I'll go all the way back here. It's very common in soccer for people to bring their own lawn chairs. And that's just not, that's not just in Enid. I mean, that's everywhere. I take my lawn chair with me everywhere because you never know if you're going to get bleachers or not. So that's not abnormal. However, on this picture, right there, okay, championship field, I would really like to have bleachers. I think that's appropriate for a championship field. And if I can accommodate more seating in other ways, I, I'm sure going to try. One thing that I really like at the South Lakes Complex in Oklahoma City and also at Mohawk Complex in Tulsa is they have what they call pods. So every quadrant of field, they have like a miniature playground and then a picnic table that's covered with shade. Because, you know, soccer fields are very expansive. You will get your exercise when you're walking to the farthest field ever. So that kind of gives them a bit of respite. And then the sidewalks help. But yes, there will be some seating. I would love to seat everyone, but it's not abnormal for people to bring their own lawn chair.
Yeah, there is a business that wasn't on your thing, that collision center that's been built on Garland that wasn't on your rendering.
Are you going to make me go back? Oh, right there. There we go. Yes, it's actually right here.
Oh, okay. All right.
I think it's also important to point out the trail system, which isn't on here, but you all know that the trail system runs along here. I think it would add to the park feel of it to hop across the street and kind of, I mean, I don't really know where it would go, but then it would feed into the sidewalks that are between the fields. I think it would help enhance the park. I mean, in all reality, I envision this as a soccer park, not a soccer complex. And in fact, we, we could change the name, Advanced Soccer Park. I don't know.
Can you speak a little bit about the work you're doing with the public school system on the east side field?
Sure. Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. The, the donors are very generous, and they were very interested in building soccer fields on the east side of town. I've spent the last year going around different sides, doing site evaluations, and the east side is just so hilly, and it would take probably a million and a half to $2 million, depending on where, to move dirt around to make it even and level for a soccer field. That's how we got to this location. However, we are very adamant at adding a field at Longfellow, a soccer field at Longfellow. So some of our kids can, can be there and walk there and ride their bike there and practice and maybe even provide an overflow game space if we get large enough tournaments in here. We're partnering with Enid Public Schools on building that budget. In fact, it'll be finalized by the end of this month on which part Enid Public Schools takes care of and which part Enid Sports will take care of. But that's very promising, and it's very exciting for the community over there. It's exciting.
Very cool.
Do you think it would be very challenging as far as keeping it maintained, kind of mapped out how you're going to keep this facility maintained?
We are working on numbers right now, on gathering more and more information on how much it would cost to maintain. The good news is, we're also working with Carol and Gerald about kind of structuring this like the David Allen Ballpark at a larger scale, where possibly after it's built, the city would own it, but we, Enid Sports, would maintain it and operate it to kind of help alleviate that pain from, from you. And, well, honestly, we'll know how to maintain a soccer field. And, well, honestly, we'll, we'll know how to maintain a soccer field better. It's more than just mowing, believe it or not.
We have good experience with that right now.
Yeah, yeah, you do. And Kevin, Kevin Beam in the Parks Department is actually a representative on the Enid Sports Board. So, I'm in touch with him often and I really, I really anticipate this being a very positive partnership between the city and Enid Sports. To help grow youth activity and wellness and family-oriented things to do. And sports is a, it's a big deal, it's always been a big deal, it's never gonna go away. And soccer is where we are right now. And I think we can bring some help to the table. Anything, Gerald, do you have anything to add?
No, I think it's a great opportunity and you've got private donors and stepped up with three million dollars. This would solve a soccer problem that we have here, it's a growing sport for boys and girls, you said over a thousand people, it'd be more than that. It's a great opportunity, it will help drive retail in that area, that's our West Gharriett Corridor. It will generate further development, I think it will help us. The, the one thing that we have talked about is the city would need, and that's why we're bringing it to you tonight, so that you will, and you will hear more about this in the future, the city will need to make some sort of commitment. We don't know what that financial commitment really is yet, those numbers were just guesses up there. It seemed, it would seem like infrastructure would be a way for us to do that. There potentially may be some water line, sewer line, trail work, road work. They have engaged an engineer, I think they just, just showed us that. And I would expect when they have something more concrete, we'll probably come back to this, this group and give you an update. But in the meantime, we'll be working with city staff through the site plan process and we'll have better cost estimates. So, the public-private partnerships that it would take to get something like this done, Jessica and her organization, some of the board members, it's a great opportunity. So, we're excited about it, you'll hear more about it in the future. We'll probably likely have some budget items related to this as we go forward if you guys so desire.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, yes, again. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, I will, Mayor.
Item six. Can we get it in five minutes?
I can.
Yes, yes, Rami's, Rami's here and she's, actually, we had the arts conference here about two weeks ago that I think was very successful. Rami and Tammy and Dave can tell us all about that. But some of you have requested to hear from Rami directly and she's here to give you an update on the project, where it's at, and answer your questions.
I've changed it to dogs because they're so fun and everybody loves them, I hope, maybe not. Yeah, I'm happy to update, thank you for asking me to come and speak. We are obviously a little behind schedule for reasons that are completely out of my control, which is namely, the steel. I do wanna keep it very brief, I'm happy to go into as much detail as you want. But I, I kind of wonder if maybe the best way to accommodate time is simply to answer questions. I mean...
What's the current timeline?
The current timeline is that the steel still has not been fabricated. I, my understanding from the steel manufact, or from the people who we're working with on the steel is that once they start fabrication, it will take fifteen to seventeen workdays to roll the steel. That's being done in Tulsa, it will go back to Oklahoma City, they'll cut it to length after rolling, fabricate everything into the points, there's some attachments and some welding that happens in Oklahoma City. Then, it will be primed and delivered to the site primed. Realistically, we're looking at after Christmas, just based upon estimates and seeing how slow it's gone so far.
Am I correct that?
I wanna be realistic.
Am I correct that the first manufacturer's machine broke on you after the steel was already like a month late?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Has, has the design of the project changed at all?
There's some minor design things, but nothing that we haven't been running past city staff and permitting and things like that, but yes.
Would you like to share those with us?
I'd be happy to, they're not, I don't, unfortunately, have a visual for you. But that will go through the permitting process for sure. What had been, everything that you saw were all emotional renderings up to date. So, all of the very beautiful imagery of the people and the fields were all renderings that Adam had created based upon kind of a feel and a tone. At the end of August, we had a design that was over budget for the surface. The, the structure itself stays exactly the same, like, we're there with that, with, the pipe is ordered. Everything about the layout and the movement and the bend and the arches of the steel stays the same. What the surface of the skin had been designed with was potentially several different materials, perforated mesh, metal mesh. And we've moved away from that and we're gonna work with something that will still create the shade, it will still incorporate stability and allow for structural engineering of wind flow. But it will be a series of ropes and cables that will be designed in a very pleasing and lightweight material.
What we could do, Rami, is when, one thing, Michael Shug is your architect right now, he's also the school's guy and he's also involved in the soccer project, so he's a multi-faceted busy guy.
Hi, Michael.
When you have a new rendering or something, if you could send it to us, we'll send it out to all the commissioners to make sure that, they're concerned that hopefully it hasn't changed much from what you've shown originally because they would, they would need to be made aware of that.
Absolutely, the look and feel remains very much the same.
Also, there were some things too, just to address just very quickly. OG&E had talked about moving some power lines. I did speak with Mike Ruby today and the city has already paid to move those lines and there was a holdup for various reasons. At some point, those lines will be buried for the telephone poles are in the parking lot south of Convention Hall. But it's my understanding that doesn't have any impact on your project or when it starts. It will make it probably nicer when those things are, are buried.
Yeah.
And that was the update I got from him and I want you guys to be aware of, of that.
Great, do they know when they're gonna move them?
I do not, he, he, no, we do not know exactly when. But the good news is, they're already paid for, it won't cost the city another dime and they will be moved at some point, hopefully soon.
Yeah, OG&E has been very gracious and wanting, they want very much to have that finished before we start construction. And Mike and I have been in communication about that. The idea being that that would be out of the way, the site has been flagged with OG&E flags already, there are three sets of flags on site. And OG&E is one of them with the idea that those power lines would disappear before we would even start. Because our first step is putting electric down from the junction box to our site. And then, it's steel comes in and then everything else happens after that.
The power lines will not be, will not be a distraction for you. And just one other thing to clarify for folks, 'cause I've heard this question, so maybe some of the commissioners have. The contract that we've written up just had a date in there of December. You're expecting to be done much sooner than that, right?
I really wish that I'd been done last week.
December of next year, December eighteen. And that was legal language just to ensure that that would be, we thought that would be more than time that would ever take, so.
Well, we have a ten-year commitment, so four or five months is not gonna make that much difference.
Thank you, Mayor Stewart.
Do it right.
Yeah, exactly. Are there any other questions? I know you're anxious to move forward.
I would just like to mention that we, we talked about this project at the State Arts Conference. Folks were really interested and excited and, and we are getting a lot of really good press and exciting attention from all over the state. It was really, really great to have folks here from all over, several hundred to see Enid and see everything we did and, and are doing. And it was a really, really great opportunity for feedback, it was, it was exciting. The conference went really well.
It was a good conference.
Rami, thank you.
Thank you.
Keep us updated.
Okay.
We're going to move item seven to the next study session. We will adjourn and meet upstairs at six-thirty.
Thank you for joining us for the Enid City Commission Study Session. If you have any questions or comments, visit our website at enid.org.